The Century Unified School District Board of Trustees meeting for October 12th is called to order at 6:02. Please let the record reflect that all board members are in attendance. Our next item of business is adoption of the agenda. What are the wishes of the board?
I have a motion by trustee Paul and I have a second by trustee Chan.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven zero. At this time, we will take any comments from the public on the closed session items. If there is any member of the public wishing to address the board related to any of the closed session agendized items, the number to dial is (559) 276-3150. We'll allow 30 seconds to pass before we adjourn to closed session. Once again, if you are a member of the public and you wish to provide a comment related to the agendized closed session items, now is the time to call. You can dial (559) 276-3150. If you are here in person and you would like to provide a comment, please come forward to the podium.
Thirty seconds have passed. We have no comment by phone at this time.
Thank you. Hearing no comments, we will now adjourn to closed session and return to open session at 7:00 PM or as soon as they're out.
We're ready to begin.
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 The board reconvenes to open session. Next, items to report from our closed session. The certified personnel report, motion carried by a motion by me and a second by trustee Brooks. Classified personnel report, also unanimous support by a motion by trustee Cervantes and a second by trustee Solis. Our next item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. If I can please have vice president Solis lead us.
Please stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its name.
Thank you. Next, we move on to our presentations and reports. Do we have our Central High School ASB president? ASB, right? ASB president Caitlin Baker?
Thank you. Good evening, Mrs. Davis, board and cabinet members. My name is Caitlin Baker and I am proud to represent Central High School as its ASB president. I would first like to start off by saying it is a nice change to be back in physical classes with fellow students and no longer on Zoom regardless of the mask. Our campus has strengthened sense of community and school spirit has seen a significant increase this year. Since school started, we have had some very successful events such as our conjoint homecoming with East Campus at Collegian Stadium where we crowned kings and queens at halftime of the football game and our very own homecoming rally out at Kaufman Stadium where we crowned our underclass princes and princesses. The theme for homecoming was back to the 90s and we had a majority of the students participate in dress up days and lunch activities. Students were ready to get involved in showing their school spirit by participating in these days and reaching out to leadership with new ideas for weeks to come. September continued to be a busy month with our safety week which incorporated information on bullying, drug abuse, domestic violence, and suicide prevention. We had different agencies from Fresno County as well as our NAMI Club that provided information to students about these topics during lunch. On Wednesday of that week, we had the county sheriff speak to the students about our run, hide, fight prevention in the case in which an active shooter were to appear on campus. Overall, it was quite informative and left a lasting impression on the students who participated. Starting tomorrow, right here in the pack, all three Central High Schools will be putting on performances of the musical Mamma Mia. The cast members alongside the director, choreographers, parents, and other sponsors have been working hard the past four and a half weeks to help fund and make this production possible. Out at Central, we have been encouraging students and staff to support the students performing and the response has been better than expected. Show up if you would like to attend. It is at 7:30 PM, doors open at 7:00. It will run October 14 through 16, 21st through 23rd, and closes that night. Also, right now, we have Central students showing animals and projects while winning awards at the Big Fresno Fair. On October 23rd, we will be having our annual Sadie Hawkins Dance on the Central High School Quad. This year's theme is haunted Sadies with a haunted house and club selling items to raise money for future needs. We hope that the students enjoy the event and are looking forward to the spooky night. Red Ribbon Week will be the last week of October and will go along with the Halloween theme and dress up dates. We will be continuing to spread a drug-free message during the week on CHS TV. The hope is to drill the importance of safety and staying drug-free into the minds of students to promote a healthy environment on our campus. That's all for today. Thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you Caitlin. Next, employee association highlights. We do not have a representative for the Central Unified Teachers Association. Do we have a representative from the California School Employees Association wishing to address the board at this time? Does anyone know if we're supposed to have a representative tonight?
We have no one by phone.
Okay, thank you. Going once, going twice? No representative, we'll move on with our agenda. Our next item is superintendent and board communications, acting superintendent Davis.
Thank you, President Correia. This week, I'm enjoying hosting student roundtables with each of our high schools. I've enjoyed honest feedback from Central East students as well as Justin Garza High School students about how we should spend money, what we should continue to do that we do well, and how we should get better. Tomorrow, I head to Central High School and on Friday, I will get to meet with the Pershing and Pathway students, class, and Central Island homeschool. I do want to recognize the town of Biola, you may have seen it in the news recently, for having the highest vaccination rates across all of Central San Joaquin Valley. Thank you trustee Cervantes for some behind the scenes efforts to help this happen. A great showing of the community to have more than 80% of the community vaccinated. Gives me an opportunity to take this time also to encourage members of our community to get vaccinated if they haven't already. It is best protection we have against the pandemic and keeping our students in school right now. I'd like to congratulate a few different folks as well. Justin Garza High School Band earned second place at Fresno Fair's Big Band Review and it was their first time ever performing for an audience and they made a big impression. Also like to congratulate our Central Cheer Varsity Team on their big win this past weekend. They competed in the Reach the Beach USA Regional Competition in Santa Cruz and brought home first place and are now advancing to Nationals. Caitlin Baker just stole the show on Mamma Mia, so I hope that many of you get out to see Mamma Mia. And lastly, I'd like to thank Jessie Bath and Tomas and Steve's crew. The grounds crew was really busy today. The storm took care of a lot of our trees unfortunately and you probably saw our trucks out around the district, making sure the schools were safe and the trees that did not weather the storm well were taken care of and out of the way from students and out in the community where some of them landed in roads. So, that's all I got for tonight.
Let's give our students a big round of applause. Is there any board member wishing to speak? Trustee Mayling?
I just wanted to thank the teachers and administration that at the West Campus that helped a lot of the students move their livestock and projects to the fair. You guys were out there at 5:30 in the morning and you're still out there now.
have a resolution declaring October 25th through the 29th as Red Ribbon Week. Other than that, what are the wishes of the Board on the consent agenda? Thank you. I have a motion by trustee Cervantes, a second by trustee Solis. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We move on to our action items. Our first item is hold a public hearing and adopt Resolution Number 2122-14, Making Findings on Energy Savings and Authorizing Agreement to Install Energy-Efficient Measures. This item is returning from our previous agenda and therefore I will begin with the public hearing. So at this time, I will open the public hearing. Any member in the public or watching us virtually, if you wish to address the Board during this public hearing, the number to dial is 559-276-3150.
We have no comments by phone at this time.
Thank you. Hearing, no comments in person either. I will now close the public hearing and we will move on to approval of the resolution. Is there any update Assistant Superintendent McLean that you'd like to provide?
Not at this time. We do have Mr. Christopher Stowe in the audience here in case there are any questions, but yeah, just the same discussion as we had last time.
Thank you. So at this time, is there any public comment related to the adoption of the resolution?
No comments by phone at this time.
Thank you. Any comments or questions by the Board? What are the wishes of the Board on this item?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Cervantes, I have a second by trustee Paul. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Our next item is discuss and approve district superintendent search. This item returns also from our previous board meeting and to assist our discussion as I know there was some difficulty in hearing me the last time, I prepared a superintendent search options outline. As some of you may have heard, we have two options to move forward. We can conduct the search internally, which means that our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources would be conducting the search, or we can move forward with requesting RFPs to have a third party conduct the search. If our district conducts the search, we anticipate it will take three to four months. Of course, things may change depending on the Board's involvement, the ability to meet, or if there are any needs to reallocate our workforce. The second option under a third party, it's estimated also between two to four months. We won't have the exact date unless we move forward with requesting RFPs. The general process would include to identify whether the cert, well, today, what I'd like to do is move forward with either requesting RFPs for a third party or to make a decision to conduct the search internally. Once that decision is made, depending on whether we go internal or we request RFPs, we would initial a meeting with the Board and discuss the process, set a timeline. Then we'd obtain community and staff input. Once we've collected all that input, that information would return to the Board for discussion and to review the job description and the job postings to ensure that it incorporates the feedback we've received. We then post and recruit. The applicant, the applications would be returned to the Board for a selection of the finalists. We would conduct our final interviews and then negotiate and make an offer, or I'm sorry, make an offer, negotiate the contract, and bring the contract back for approval to the Board during a regularly scheduled board meeting. So that would be the process. Is there anything administration would like to add before I take any public comment and we move to Board discussion? So my recommendation to that tonight is to move forward with requesting RFPs and I can provide my comment as to why I believe that would be the best option for the Board once we take any public comment and open the discussion for the Board. Okay, so at this time, is there any member of the public wishing to provide a comment?
No comments by phone.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion by the Board. So my recommendation to the Board is that we move forward with requesting RFPs. It is going to add an additional cost, but I think that given the workload and the staffing shortages that our district is experiencing, I am not comfortable in recommending that we redirect the services of our Assistant Superintendent to conduct this work. I think that we'd be better served to have a third party who's going to be dedicated. Not that you wouldn't be dedicated and put in the work that would need to be done, but given the constant changes related to the pandemic with vaccination requirements and testing requirements and all the uncertainty, I just don't think that that's the most efficient and effective way to use our resources. That is my opinion. Any comments, questions from the Board? Trustee Paul?
Thank you for your position, stating your position very clearly. I would add to that that we have a dynamic district. We have a growing district. Ultimately, I mean, I think we're going to see growth and that's pretty unique in California. And I think we owe it to the community to take this seriously. And to take it seriously doesn't mean that we don't consider Ms. Davis, but it means that, it means that we throw out a wider net, which would do a couple of things. It would, it would express our seriousness about finding the absolute best and that we want the absolute best for our district, but it also does, assuming Ms. Davis applies, it also does her the service of, and the benefit potentially of being in that mix with a national search. So there are, there are a lot of components to this. I think the benefits, even though it will cost more money and I, and I respect those who think that we ought to save some money through the process. I respect that opinion, but at the same time, I think, I think we owe it to the district and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Chan? Trustee Chan and then trustee Solis.
I appreciate the remarks. I concur. You know, at least during my, my time, you know, on this Board, obviously the superintendence as, as the leader of the ship undergoes a huge amount of scrutiny. So, any which way that we can make a process as transparent as possible and allay the broader communities, any sort of second guessing, I think, and by having a third party at least, help us to identify specific candidates, I think it's a, it's a positive step.
Trustee Solis?
I'm just going to repeat myself. The timeframe is similar in both proposals. I would speak to doing it internally simply because I don't think the, the cost is going to, I don't think the, the benefits are going to outweigh the cost. I think the cost is going to be higher. I think that money can be used better within the district than this. Money has already been spent on this issue. A decision was made to spend a certain amount on this issue already. Now we're going on a second decision pertaining to the same subject matter and we're wanting to spend money again. Because of that, I just can't support this simply because of the price tag attached to it.
Thank you trustee Solis. Anyone else? Trustee Cervantes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, first of all, this is extremely serious. I don't, I'm not sure how to take that comment, to be perfectly honest. And, but with all that being said, listening to your opinion, Madam Chair, in regards to the current climate that we're in, I can't help but to feel differently about my initial comments from prior meeting. So thank you for sharing that and I think that we're all open and listeners and we're empathetic to situations, but you said a few things that were incredibly impactful to me just now in regards to our current situation and what the demands that our current staff has been under, that I, I'm starting to see the value in potentially taking this out to a, a third party. Do we know at this point in time, an approximate cost? I know that we have some history. Obviously, we've gone through this a couple of times in, in recently. Do we, do you have any of those?
The last time this district went through a third party was over a decade, if I remember correctly.
We did some calls to firms just recently and asked that question and both estimated a cost between 20 and 25,000. I don't know that that's comprehensive or will meet the needs. That's what they gave us on the call.
Thank you.
So to address your concern trustee Cervantes, once we're done with the discussion, I will entertain a motion or make a motion to move forward with requesting RFPs. That doesn't mean that we're going to select a vendor. Once they return, if the consensus of the Board, should you agree and there, should there be a majority in agreement to move forward with requesting RFPs, the majority can decide to change its mind and go internal. But I know that I had also requested that our team run some numbers because given the shortages we are experiencing in staffing, we're going to incur an additional cost to do this internally as well without even factoring redirecting our Assistant Superintendent's focus to this project. So Assistant Superintendent Collegian, can you address and talk a little bit about the calculation of the potential cost that we're going to, that the hard costs will incur in addition to allocating your services?
And if the search was done internally?
Yes.
I would anticipate with advertising costs and staffing costs, approximately 7,000 to 10,000 to conduct the work compared to the outside agency like Superintendent Davis mentioned, anywhere between 20 and 40 is the going rate, if you will, for some of the outside agencies.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Trustee Cervantes?
My, my point was, I spoke strongly against going with it and by listening to some of your opinion, it kind of changed my opinion. So I was merely, I wasn't saying you made up our mind for us. I was just speaking on behalf because I spoke strongly against it, or at least relatively strongly against it the last meeting. And sometimes by listening to other people and taking other things into consideration, you know, I, I think it's probably the best decision that we could do is to probably go through a third party at this point in time based on our current situation. There's a lot of demands being asked of this administration and there's a lot of additional things happening that weren't happening and, and you know, in other incidents or in the past. So, I understand what you're saying. Again, I'm not saying you changed my mind. I'm saying I changed my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the Board? If not, I move to request at least three RFPs with respect to conducting a superintendent search to include a proposed timeline and the cost associated for the services. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Any abstentions? Motion carries six, one. Thank you. So I will work with administration to solicit those RFPs. Thank you. We move on to our next item, accept gifts to the district. Assistant Superintendent McLean?
Thank you, President Carrillo. So tonight, we have four different gifts to the district that are listed there and we appreciate the contributions made by each one. I can just briefly read through those. Central Track and Field Program received a donation of 21 pole vault poles valued at $7,852 from James and Carol McEwen. We thank them. Secondly, Central High School received a donation of services valued at $4,527 from Jeremy Mailing Farms to harvest almonds for the Ag Farm Program. Thank you. El Capitan Middle School received a donation of $1,000 from Ashwood Construction Incorporated for athletic supplies and equipment and also a donation, a donation of $100 from Tevin Block for school banners. And lastly, Justin Garza High School received a donation of $5,000 from Clausen Honda for the cheer program and we're recommending that the Board accept the gifts to the district at this time.
Any comments or questions from the Board?
Comment? I'm, I'm very grateful and happy to see that we moved this from consent to agenda to an item to show our gratitude and thanks toward our, our people that donate toward our district and I just wanted to say I'm grateful for that. Thank you. And motion to approve?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries six with one abstention. We move on to our next action item, Review Naming Committee Applications and Appoint Committee Members. This item is returning from previous board meetings. We opened and solicited applications for individuals to serve on the committee. There are still a couple of areas that we would like to continue to solicit participation and that would be for trustee Solis's area and trustee Brooks. So if any individuals are interested in serving on this committee, this item will be tabled to our, our next board meeting, but we do want to provide an opportunity for any discussion on the item. Trustee Chan?
I just wanted to thank the public for those that applied and looking forward to a few more applications, especially in trustee Solis and trustee Brooks's regions.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I move to table the item. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I will take trustee Chan's second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries. This item has been tabled and will return to a future board meeting. Next item, Discuss and Approve Nominations for the Fresno County Committee on School District Organization. Acting Superintendent Davis?
Thank you. This is a process right now, although we are in District One, we need to bring this to you because there are some vacancies in both District Three and Four. You'll see that there are two seats up for election. In District Three, there is just the incumbent. Should you have another name as well that you want to nominate, there are two seats open in District Three. And then you will see two names and the attached information on all of them for District Four. Nominations are due by October 15th, as you noticed, so this is coming directly to action and does need your action for the names to be submitted on behalf of, of your views.
Any comments? We'll begin with District Three. Any objection to recommending Myra in Cobley as our one out of two individuals for this district? Okay. The second, District Four, we vote for one and there are two candidates, Luis Mata and Joseph Vasquez. Any feedback, recommendations from any Board member?
If it would help, I can tell you from their application, Luis Mata is a resident of Sanger, currently a member of the Central Valley Safety Society Knights of Columbus, would like to serve as a member to help our youth with their educational needs and provide the best vehicle for them to succeed. And their other educational-related activities and involvement vested interest with grandchildren in the district that they reside. And the second applicant for this is Joseph Vasquez, a resident of Parlier, who has coached 20 years of football and basketball as a camp director for IHS. He notes he organized the youth basketball camp K-12, believes in youth development, and loves coaching and making others better. Also states he volunteered with a community food giveaway and support all sport activities and events Parlier High School puts on. We would like to continue to serve his community in a larger scale and continue making others better. And has noted that he has worked for Parlier Unified School District for 33 years as a home liaison. I don't know if that helps, but...
Does anyone feel strongly towards one candidate over the other?
Seems like they're both extremely qualified to do this position. But I can't help to be pulled at the fact that Mr. Vasquez, in 20 years of coaching and being at the school athletics, and 33-year-long employee of their district, obviously seems to be extremely vested, not that in any shape or form that Mr. Mata seems to be otherwise. But I kind of feel like that kind of tips the scale, at least in my opinion. Difficult decision, but I would feel very comfortable going either one. But I really feel like Mr. Vasquez may be the better choice. No offense to any of the applicants. I appreciate them sticking their neck out there and wanting to get involved in community. And they should all be applauded.
Anyone have any other thoughts? Any objection to recommending Mr. Vasquez and Ms. Coble? If not, I'll move to recommend Mr. Vasquez and Ms. Coble for the nominations. Is there a second?
Second.
I think I heard Trustee Brooks before you, Trustee Solis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, everyone. Our next item is Approve Core and Supplemental Materials for Secondary Course.
Good evening, Acting Superintendent Davis and members of the Board. Administration reviews and recommends for approval instructional materials based on a determination that such materials are an effective learning resource. School staff have reviewed and requested this item for use, beginning with the current school year. Administration is recommending the Board approve this supplemental material for the secondary course, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Dr. Boatwright also has a copy of the book if anybody wants to take it home and read it. What are the wishes of the Board on this item? Thank you. I have a motion by Trustee Cervantes. Is there a second? I have a second by Trustee Chan. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Dr. Boatwright. Our next item is Approve Trustee Area Redistricting Study. Assistant Superintendent McLean?
Thank you, President Creo. So, last time, we had some discussion about the study, redistricting study process. We wanted to bring it back for action tonight and further discussion. We do have the three gentlemen that were with us last time as representatives of each company that we received proposals from. They're joining us via audio tonight. So, the Board will have the opportunity to ask any further questions that may come up this evening. So, we do have Schoolworks, Mr. Ed Gonzalez, Odell Planning and Research, Mr. Daniel Brannick, and then from Giannovo Solutions, Mr. Jesus Garcia. I did want to mention that we spoke with the representatives in between from the last Board meeting as far as their proposals. We did get a revised proposal from Giannovo, which was a reduced fee from what they had given us before. We appreciate that. The other two proposals are the same as what we received the first time. So, at this time, I'll open it up for any discussion and questions from the Board.
Any comments or questions from the Board? Trustee Chan?
So, I guess, Mr. McLean, this question would be to all of our vendors. As far as I understand the contract, two of them are providing website postable files. So, meaning, I assume that the final project would be a PDF document, and one of them would be a tool. And I want also, so I guess, one is to clarify with both vendors if that's, if I'm reading the contract properly. And for the third part, in terms of the tool, would the district have proprietary rights of the tool to use after this process as well?
Yes, I think it would be best just to let each person answer that question, and we may need to bring it back to them if they need it restated. So, I'll start with Mr. Gonzalez from Schoolworks. Mr. Gonzalez, if you could join the conversation at this time?
Yes, this is Dr. Ed Gonzalez. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Schoolworks will provide the PDF documentation that was described in our opening proposal at the last Board meeting. I want to make sure that that's a comprehensive answer to the question.
Answer the question?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll ask Mr. Brannick to join us from Odell Planning and Research. Mr. Brannick, are you there?
Yes, I am, Steve. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And yeah, the same. We'd provide the three maps in PDF that the district would have to utilize. And I, you know, just to add on in terms of the redistricting process for like public input, I think we'd envision if among the three mapping scenarios, there's some gaps within them that the, that the community looks at and says, "Hey, we like parts of Map One, but parts of Map Two. Can we like figure out a way to reconcile them so we get like a better option than the three that we have?" Like, that's something that could be done with the maps as well. But yeah, they'd be the district's, you know, property in a, or well, that is more of a tool question, but yeah. And yeah, that's all I, I think that's all I have on that question.
Odell, and maybe also for Schoolworks. And then I do have the question again for Giannovo. How many in-person meetings is Odell, as well as Schoolworks, as well as Giannovo suggesting in the current contract proposal?
Go ahead, Mr. Brannick.
Yeah, so, I think we would have two to three meetings. I'm checking the contract right now to make sure that I'm not missing something here. I think that there is an initial, if I'm remembering the steps right, there would be an initial meeting that, there is conceivably an option, like the way that we structure our contracts, that if a district's population had not changed in a way that would trigger the need to redraw trustee areas, that we'd only need to do two meetings, like an initial introduce the map meetings and then adoption meeting. And for the case of Central, it would be three meetings. But just, you know, how this would work and how I'd be working on it, I'd be attending in person on all of them. I believe we have something in our contract that if there were additional meetings were going to be necessary, that we could do those on like a, on a per-meeting basis if needed. But I, you know, the hope is that we could get it done on the three.
Thank you, Mr. Brannick. Mr. Gonzalez, if you could answer that same question, then we'll go to Mr. Garcia.
Yes. In our proposal, we also have committed to a 10-3 community Board meetings to present these considerations. We will provide electronic maps that will be in PDF format suitable for web posting, and also detailed 2020 census population maps that will have total population, adult population, and citizen base age population. So, we make those available to the districts, and we're committing to at least three maps. And in the contract, it says a minimum of three trustee boundary scenarios and three Board meetings, community meetings.
And Mr. Garcia from Giannovo, if you could join us in the conversation and answer those questions?
Yes, again, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Well, Giannovo, again, being a full-service GIS firm, will provide not only web applications, but a searchable tool that actually we're going to be using during the entire process. At the end of this scenario, we could hand over the entire package, lookup tools and the like, to the district. What would be required is for you just to get your own RTIS online account. We would port everything over, and you could just continue to use it, maybe even as a school lookup tool. That might be something. Regarding meetings, again, the standard, as the other presenters have said, it's three, four meetings, standard, either web or in person. I'm just an hour away, so I would be attending each of those meetings, possibly even a Saturday event. We will be providing you with the standard PDFs, again, PDFs, but we will also have the shapefiles that we would hand over to you. You could then, when you begin, and if you start a GIS process, you could just bring those right in. And again, since we will be giving you an online lookup tool, people will be able to type in their address and see what jurisdictions they are, what's the nearest school. You know, we'll throw in their attendance areas if you want. So, again, these are the standard packages that we are providing all of our clients.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Actually, let me defer to everyone else first.
My comments are more for Board discussion than questions to our vendors. Thank you, Trustee Chan, for asking those questions. I don't know if I'm the only one that missed it, or if this is why you asked the question, but I don't think Odell's proposal identifies how many meetings. I don't remember seeing, okay. I'm having a difficult time, sort of, in identifying the appropriate vendor. I'm conflicted because I like the GIS and the ability to be able to search. All of us as trustees and elected officials know how wonderful our maps are and how easy it is to identify where lines are and to relate that to our constituents of, "Oh, this is your address. This is exact, you're in my area." Or, "You're in Trustee Cervantes." So, I like that idea, but I just can't justify the price tag. And I don't know what the middle point is. I see the value, but compared to the other two, I just can't, I don't see the $30,000 value. And I'm comparing Giannovo Solutions to the other two for that additional service. I think it's really convenient, and it would be wonderful to be able to, for our constituents to identify and for us to be able to see exactly where our homes are within those areas. But again, I'm struggling with that. So, I'd like to hear from the rest of you as far as where you're leaning towards or what are some of the features that you do like, you don't like as we move forward with today's decision. Trustee Chan?
So, I think you're opening, President Creo, like a really important conversation because I think we have largely seen, at least the vendors that have submitted proposals, you know, understanding what the provisions of the law mandates and have essentially put to different levels how that they would make sure that we, that we meet that mandate. I want to at least suggest and ask Acting Superintendent Davis, as well as Mr. McLean, of any, I know we have a March timeline that we have to meet within the district so that, otherwise, we sort of forfeit our ability to make that decision to the county. So, and that's extremely important for me, for us, to make sure that this decision remains local. But I wonder if there's a way that for us actually design an RFP of what we want. And the reason being is, while I absolutely agree that, like, you know, certain proposals may be very, very high, I also just don't want us to have a PDF at the end of this that's just a one-and-done either. Because in so many of our other things, whether it be in our naming, you know, committee, we saw that how, you know, I know you were being facetious, but I think behind a mask, it might have, your sarcasm might have been lost, is that, of course, it is extremely difficult for folks to actually figure out what district, which trustee areas they live in because so many people just don't know. And so, and there may be other features we want, but I think it's extremely important for us to be able to tell the vendors what we want and then to be able to have them submit proposals directly about what we want.
I can respond. Yeah, March 1st is the Ed Code deadline. After that, it would go to the County Committee, and the decision would be taken out of the Board's hands. We do have a timeline that we proposed to the Board at the last meeting. It's adjustable. I do have some concerns about the timeline, just that we start the process because I believe it's important to allow time. If we do get into certain issues as we go through the process, that we have some cushion on the back end to meet that timeline. And if we do delay the project or the proposal further, we may be more challenged in meeting that deadline. However, I think it's important to understand what the Board is wanting to see in this proposal. I'm curious, maybe Mr. Brannick and Mr. Gonzalez, if you could comment on the ability, once the, and Mr. Garcia, of the ability, once the maps are approved, to have maybe a lookup feature for people to see exactly where they would fit within the trustee areas? So, I'll ask Mr. Gonzalez if you could comment on that question?
Yes. Well, this will be, the electronic file for this will be the district's property. The way that Schoolworks has done this in the past is we will have the first of our community meetings, and we bring it to the Board and to the community. The Board and the community then, you know, give their input to how they want to do this. And then that comes back in three iterations because we want to make sure we get it right. Remember that the puzzle pieces are census tract areas and not neighborhoods, like when you're adjusting school boundaries. So, once that is established after three meetings, and that's what the Schoolworks contract is committed to, after three meetings, hopefully, we've landed at to where we're going to be. Now, if there needs to be meetings beyond that, you know, I live 10 minutes away from Central Unified, so I can commit to you to come. The contract says a fourth meeting at additional charge, but I would just come, and if we need to have a fourth meeting. But we're, in our history of doing this, we've had good luck with getting that done. As far as the interactive features, it's going to be a standard type of GIS feature where you can move things and you can, you know, the public can make these suggestions. The Board can make these suggestions. But I don't want to misrepresent. This is not the same tool that Giannovo is offering you. So, I want to be very clear on that. That is how they justify that increased cost. I'm sure it's a great tool, but this is not the same tool.
And Mr. Gonzalez, do you, does Schoolwork... And Mr. Gonzalez, do, does Schoolworks have the ability to provide that tool? And if you do, I mean, I know I'm putting you on the spot, what that cost would be associated with providing that tool? Because I think, and I, Trustee Chan seems to agree, so please correct me if I'm misrepresenting. It's significant. I know, I can go to the city of Fresno's website, I can type in my address, and it'll tell me the area, and it'll show me a beautiful map. And I think we take that for granted, but it's very important, as we're redistricting or Trustee Chan brought up the renaming committee. I have to try and guess what, where I belong, what trustee area, and even then, it's not easy. So I just think it'd be one of those features that our community could significantly benefit. And I'm wondering whether that's even anything that you'd be, that your company would be able to provide.
Yes, actually, Schoolworks has the ability to do that. We're building that in the master plan documents that we're currently developing, actually an interactive GIS map for school administrators, particularly in this case, because, you know, new boundary settings for school districts and so on. So we have that interactive feature, but it was not part of the proposal for what you're talking about with the trustees. So the answer is, yes, we have the ability, but it was not part of the proposal.
And so as-
So it would have to be, it would have to be, I'm sorry to interrupt, it would have to be a proposal that is renegotiated, basically, and resubmitted.
Can you provide us an estimate as to what that additional feature would cost, just ballpark?
Yes, but I'll have to get to the president of the company, which obviously would have to be earliest tomorrow. I could not give you an estimate like that tonight.
Okay, thank you. Adele, if we can have, I apologize, I don't remember-
Mr. Brannick. Mr. Brannick.
Brannick?
Brannick, yes.
Brannick. If you, same question for you. Does your company have the ability to provide that feature? And if so, is it something that you can provide an estimated cost?
So I'll go ahead and try to answer this all together. In, what it, I want to make sure I understand what's being asked, because honestly, what it sounds like the district wants is something that definitely transcends what's needed to be done for, like, redistricting. Like, it's obviously related to it, but it, you know, for what needs to be done for that process versus having something going, you know, ongoing as a, you know, just a good interactive or informational tool that says, yeah, what, who is my trustee? What area am I in? And having, having good robust maps, or a GIS feature, something like that. In terms of, like, making a tool, honestly, it's probably something that we wouldn't do in-house. What we would, what we would do is kind of similar to what I, I'm garnering Schoolworks to talking about, is, in the, in the process of defining trustee areas, you would have, you would have geo data, like, shapefiles and whatnot, that would, would become the districts, or they, you know, have access to, to utilize, you know, on a website, on a, you know, on a mapping interface with somebody else, to build a tool that you would get out of this process. Some, you know, something that, in the course of, of, you know, working, working on this proposal and looking, looking for information, you know, one thing that, this, this might be tied in more with the redistricting than with on, ongoing, you know, information, geospatial information as it relates to trustees, or all things going on in the district, but specifically for redistricting, one thing I should mention is, there, there seem to be like, you know, a role burgeoning scene of, of like, tools, a lot of web-based tools that are being made available to, to the public to have input on, on redistricting and mapping processes. I'd point to what, like, Fresno County is doing, where, I think I talked about this at the last meeting, they have a couple of tools, like Caliper and Districtor. Whereas Caliper, my understanding of that is, it's a proprietary tool of NDCs, NDCs, National Demographics Corporation, who's like, the biggest doer of redistricting maybe in the, in the country. But my understanding is the other tool, Districtor, is like a free tool that you basically just sign up for. They add your, your geography to their, to their, like, engine underneath it, and then you can go on and, and draw districts, and, and by you, I mean, somebody from the community. You can, you can direct Districtor to say, oh, hey, I, can you add my, my boundaries to this area? And, and I don't know how backed up they are on, on doing it. It's been something I've been, been trying to poke around on and get some more information, but it struck me, I was, I was thinking that that was some additional, somebody paid money for this tool, and it's a free project, that there's, there's multiple iterations of this going on right now, because, because redistricting has been a, you know, you know, it is a big thing, like, things that concerns about gerrymandering and fair representation in, in elections, whether they be congressional, school board, what have you, hence why there's, there's open source things there. So I, I'll backtrack to try, you know, to try to more succinctly answer your, you know, your first question, that we would, we'd be able to provide the underlying spatial data, you know, to help support tools, but it probably wouldn't be something that we'd be directly doing or providing. And it definitely isn't part of the scope of the contract we'd have here, and, I mean, if I'm being honest, I don't think we would, we would try to immediately adjust that as part of it. We're, we're doing redistricting for, I think, 14 other, or 15 other school districts at this point, and we'd be, you know, we'd want to make sure that we're being responsible to Central, to everybody involved, and not, you know, overcommit what, you know, what we're providing, to make sure that everybody gets everything in time.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. Sorry, that was a little lengthy. It's very rare, very rare not seeing things in person, too.
President Correa, can I add one more thing? This is Ed Gonzalez from Schoolworks.
Go ahead.
Yeah, similar to Mr. Brannick's comments, in texting the president of the company right now, I think he wants to stay with the proposal as is. We're concerned about the time analysis, because typically, we're already looking at districts' maps in October. We're, we're having our first meetings if their, if their variance is over 10% in November, and then that's going to be the first of three or four meetings. Decisions, of course, you know, December is going to be short, January's going to be short, decision has to be made after community approval by February 28th. So I think we're going to go ahead and stay with the proposal as is, and I want to make sure I'm respectful of the board's, you know, timeline to get this all done. And again, we will be respectful of the board's decisions, because I think you've got some good choices, it just depends on really what you want.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Just wanted to jump in and also say that, in between the last meeting and this meeting, again, we did ask if they would like to modify their proposal in conjunction with this discussion, and the first two were staying with the current one. So it's really for the board, I think, at this time, it's a choice of any of these three with the, with the proposals that are before you tonight.
Stephen, could I say some things, if you don't mind?
Yes.
All right, so again, thank you for this opportunity. Well, first of all, GeoNova is a Esri business partner, and Esri is the de facto largest GIS company, and so we have a very strong relationship with the corporation, and so both Alex and Luciana have years of experience, so they get the latest tools. GeoNova has a number of in-house tools that will allow for greater transparency of the data during this very short process. Again, you know, it isn't lost on how, this is so important, it only occurs every 10 years. So both the dashboard that we've created and made available for your review would allow for the community to do just that. They would be able, right now, to type in their address, go to it, find out who is their trustee, and see how that geography has, has changed. I have all of the 2020 census data, we have all the 2020 census data down to the block level, and the blocks are going to be the defining geographies. I have your, your current districts, I have your, the, I have the outline of the district. So in addition to the tools that we would create through a product called Survey 123, we have another online lookup tool for creation of communities of interest. And then there are, as Mr. Brannick mentioned, there are, there are a plethora of other tools out there. Districtor is a great tool, it's however, not free. It is, we can, you know, get a custom tool application for you. There's another great tool called Dave's Redistricting. Go on to that, that's, that's a lot of fun. Now, regarding the products, the product that was mentioned of, of a MapTitude, MapTitude is actually a private company. It's owned by a transportation company out of Boston called Caliper, Caliper Corporation, but they are the de facto redistricting firm. So we're not using Caliper, we're using Esri GIS tools. And again, we will, we will be creating a lookup tool for the community to review now, as is, and it, it's part of the function of getting community input. Now, I have family in Viola, I've been going up there for 20 years. My cousins bought a news house in the, in, you know, there, outside of the Central Unified, near the high school. So I'm, I'm familiar with the area, and it is changing. Fresno, Bakersfield, throughout the Central Valley, we are growing tremendously. And, and I think that change and that growth, you know, requires, you know, more people are going to be asking you, I'd like to ask the board, how many phone calls do you get at your switchboard? You know, where do I live? You know, I'll bet you that many, many, you get many more calls than you know. And so what we will offer is a online tool for redistricting, and then at the end, we just hand that tool over to you, and you can use it, and call us if you want, or have your own person there, learn how to do them. So we, we have all the tools at your disposal, and just on another note, this is becoming more and more common, not just in school districts, but in other areas. And just a final note, Fresno County has a terrific GIS team, Fresno, they're doing a great job in many, many areas, and what we're trying to do is bring that same level of highest quality to Central Unified.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
I have a question for Mr. McLean. I don't know, when they do the redistricting, obviously it's based on the census, is there any anticipation for potential growth through to master plans, things of that nature? Because in certain areas of our district, we're looking at some pretty substantial growth, and in other areas in our district, we look at relatively some very stagnant growth. Is that taken into consideration when they do whatever it is, whatever algorithm that they do to, to reconfigure census based on demographics and/or districts?
Yes, I believe the growth is very much a factor of what we're looking at in this process. I believe all three firms can adequately service in terms of the data analysis. I think what you're looking at here is just some choices between pricing and versus the proposals you have, you have between the three, and deciding which one is the best fit for this district. So I'd like to ask if we could get a motion to, to go in a direction, and I can answer any other questions.
Do you have a recommendation to provide to the board?
I've looked at all three for myself. I, I think it's valuable to have a local understanding of our community. I know that we've worked with Schoolworks for a long time, and they've provided a lot of information to us. I appreciate the, the scope of what GeoNova is able to do, but I also look at Adele, and just looking at their, their experience. We have worked with them in the past on other work, going back in time. The fact that Mr. Brannick is a central alumni and knows the community from, from living here in the district, I think will be helpful, and is familiar with the community. The firm also does other districts in our area, so they're, they're familiar with Fresno. So based on that, and they have a competitive price, so based on that, my recommendation would be for Adele. But again, it's really up to the board's decision of what they believe is best for them.
Thank you. Any further discussion by the board?
I'm going to still make a motion for us to have a defined RFP, whether it gets a second or not. The reason being is, our districts were last configured in 2014, and just even in my quick math, I can see that at one time, by population, they were supposed to be together, but as of the last election, the smallest trustee areas are 60%, or sorry, the larger ones are 60% larger than the smaller ones. So there is quite a bit of shuffling that has to do, that could have huge, like, repercussions, and I, I would just also not want to spend such a large amount of money on a tool that we will not use ever again. So I would motion for us to actually define what we want, and then, and see, you know, see, see if the different companies would like to actually meet our recommendations, or our needs.
Do you have set criteria that you'd like to propose with your motion?
Yeah, I think that, along with, I think at the very minimum, and I'm actually kind of surprised at some of the responses, because, for instance, layering areas on whether you're using ArcGIS or Google Maps is actually not that difficult, actually. And so, once you actually create the system that you're going to use, I think there's actually a lot of interesting data that this would be able to give us as a district, even beyond. So, for instance, these are the data files that the different gentlemen that have been presenting are sharing, these are, these are public. You, you basically can update this. But I think the difference is, will we have a dynamic product, one that can change over time, or will we have a static product? And any which way, we're going to, we're, we're, we're paying a significant amount, whether you see it as a static product or for a dynamic product. And for some reason, while other districts may or may not be asking these questions, and may be satisfied with, with the choices we have, I just think that we have an opportunity here to push further.
President Correa?
Yes.
Can either your Trustee Chan repeat the motion? I didn't catch it.
I was going to motion for, despite the recommendation against, for us to, as quickly as possible, have a defined RFP of what exactly we want, so that companies then can respond to our exact needs. As opposed to, right now, there is a, a legal mandate, so people are just kind of making sure that we are in compliance with the legal mandate by the, by the date being set March 1st. But I just see this as an opportunity to be, build a tool that would actually be helpful for our district and for our community, beyond just the legal mandate.
Okay, so in simple terms, what's the motion?
The motion is to build criteria for an RFP. I, I would be happy to support that motion, and second it, my concern is that we need to, we need to identify that criteria now. Otherwise, I don't think we're going to have enough time. So as far as, if you have proposed criteria, now would be, I'd like you to make the motion, list the criteria, and then we can move forward and see whether the motion will carry.
So I guess a criteria off the top of my head would be, obviously, one is that we are meeting the redistricting mandates. The second would be a tool built upon that, where the public would be able to see where they live, and, and, and see that we, we have, that we have this system, that we're not just getting a PDF, but we actually have a system to be able to layer other additional data on top of that.
Okay, I will second your motion. So the motion is to go out for an RFP with a criteria that they need, that the companies responding to the RFP meet the redistricting mandate, and that they can incorporate a search tool, as well as any tool that allows us to layer upon the maps? Is that correct? Okay.
Do you want, you want dynamic mapping tool?
Yes.
May I also ask that, as you're considering this, that you understand the timeline to make sure we have enough time for the community engagement, which will require a multiple visits? So it could require this item have to come back as action and move faster, or require a special board meeting, just to make sure we make our timelines.
Yes, thank you.
Could I ask a clarifying question just in regards to the RFP process? Because we have three firms that we've received proposals here and listening to the conversation tonight, at least one other had said that they were staying with their current proposal, maybe both. So I guess the question is, who are we looking for to respond to the proposal in addition to GeoNova?
Are there any other redistricting companies? I mean, I can't imagine that these are the only three.
There are other companies out there. I did talk to one previously and then I know there are certainly others. I think one of the challenges may be just the timeframe of where we're at as of this date and time and the process to get those replies back. Because many of these firms, as you heard tonight, are contracted already with multiple districts. Because every district at this time is going through the same process. So there's a lot of work for these firms to get through in a short period of time.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Trustee Paul?
Yeah, in light of what you just said, it would be really difficult to go out and solicit more firms, it seems like right now, and hit the timelines. So it seems reasonable to ask them to refine their proposals and not seek other firms at this point. But that's my opinion.
Well, they're not going to, they're not going to do anything to their proposals. I mean, if I heard them correctly, all three stand by their proposals. So there would be.
Okay, I misunderstood, I thought only two were.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to take this to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Was that three? Did I hear say? Aye.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can we call for a hands vote?
A roll call vote?
Or a roll call vote.
Yes, I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry. But yes, Anita, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes?
Yes.
Trustee Chan?
Yes.
Trustee Maile?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Solis?
Yes.
President Correa.
Yes. So with that, motion carries. We'll put out that RFP and send it out to as many redistricting firms that we can and bring that to the next board meeting as action and we can make the decision then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us today.
Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Yes, thank you.
Y'all have a good night.
Our next item and our final action item, approved district use of variable term waiver request for 30-day substitute basic skills requirements for the 2021-2022 school year due to shortage of substitute employees. Assistant Superintendent Collegian?
Thank you, President Correa, that's quite a long title. The CTC or the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing does allow district experiencing shortage in substitute teachers to issue a variable term waiver requesting a 30-day substitute basic skills requirement. Essentially, what this does is it waives the basic skills exam upon being a substitute teacher and identifies the following criteria to be met in order to substitute in a certificated role here in the state of California for this given school year. And those procedures include that the educator must hold a bachelor's degree to be eligible for the term waiver. They also have to make acknowledgements for the mandated reporting requirements, as all our employees do. Professional fitness, positive employment history, as verified by three major agencies, one being the National Association of State Directors of Teacher Education and Certification. The other one is the California Teacher on, California Commission on Teacher Credentialing. And lastly, fingerprint clearance by both the Department of Justice and the Federal Bureau of Investigation. A sample variable term waiver request is attached to this item for your review and consideration. Administration is recommending approval of this item. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions or comments on this item? Trustee Cervantes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have the answer to this question, but at this point, are we drug screening all new employees or potential new employees? And if we are, does this change what we would do with our current policy?
We don't currently drug test certificated employees, although it'd be in alignment with our current policy, with clearance of fingerprint clearance between the FBI and the Department of Justice.
Thank you.
And clearance through the county for eligible work based on fitness of employment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? What are the wishes of the board on this item? I'll move to approve, is there a second?
One second.
Was that Trustee Maile? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you very much. We move on to our information items. M1, receive information on SIR3 funds. Ms. Grigsby?
Push, hit the button that says push. Good evening, board members and Assistant Superintendent and Acting Superintendent Davis. Happy to be back this evening, the work continues. This item comes back to you after our initial conversation regarding the process of writing an expenditure plan for SIR3 funds originally on September 14th. Our team is making significant progress and is currently compiling all the input from our community, staff, and students. Attached for your preview is the plan template to help you envision how the final plan will look and how it'll be structured and the information that'll be required in the plan. Over the next few days, our team will come together after final discussions and writing of the actual plan based on all this community input and ongoing student input. We will then put a plan up as posted as draft. It will also be available for public comment for several days and we will hold some virtual office hours too, to allow comment from the public. We are recommending that this item go forward to the next board agenda for approval and/or action and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Or comments? I know you mentioned that the plan gets posted as a draft. Do we translate that and do we then host office hours also in any of our other dominant languages to allow our community to provide additional input?
The office hours, yes, well, and public comment and all that. The entire plan, it's usually not feasible to translate. So I usually write together like a summary template and then I get it. And I have ours translators on standby and they're very gracious and put that as a priority for us. So we can give a summary. And then if any parent wants to reach out that wants a deeper analysis of that, we can provide time to sit with them side by side and read it with them and provide interpretation.
Great, thank you.
Of course.
Trustee Chan?
Would it be possible, Mrs. Grigsby, since we had such a large parent interest and participation during the process and giving their suggestions, where we would actually present it out to them as well in a town hall sort of, even if it's virtual as we did last time too, just to make sure that we closed the loop in the sense that we solicited information, but just to make sure that they actually directly see and comment upon how that information that we solicited, that they actually know that they had an impact and hopefully some of their suggestions actually come into fruition.
You mean in lieu of the public comment or in addition to?
In addition to.
Oh, it's certainly possible, yeah.
Is it feasible, given the timeline? Whatever the workload may be?
If it's the will of the board, we shall make it happen.
I mean, I would love to hear that and see that. I think that our families would appreciate seeing full circle. I think it's definitely going above and beyond to reach them and make sure this is what we've taken and we've listened versus just posting it. But I also want to be mindful, which is why I ask.
What I would love to suggest is that the public input sessions be held with office hours where they can interact with the plan. We bring it to you at the last meeting in October as scheduled for you to review, make any final revisions, and then close the loop following that by sharing out through video and/or communication that can be two-way what the final plan is. I appreciate wanting to make sure people see where their voice was heard. I also appreciate she's got a week, the state gave us a month to pull this together. And so I do want to make sure they have public input and can see the document. But you may on October 28th have a couple of comments or adjustments that you want made. I would love for those to be captured as well.
And just if I may offer, there is a section of the plan that directly asks us to provide exactly where we've woven the input from our community into the plan. So there's a box there that we could highlight and I can certainly make sure that that comes up and that I highlight that when we do the virtual office hours for public comment.
When those office hours are held, are they held outside our normal bank hours? Outside the?
Yes, I was going to do it in the evening and post it via Parent Square a couple of days before periodically to remind people that we will be available. The plan, I'm anticipating putting the plan up on the website with an input document link there so they can either type it into a Google form or they can attend the office hours or they can do both.
Trustee Chan? Will that serve as a?
Yeah.
Compromise?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think that more often than not, parents always share, look, you take this information from us, but we don't know if this was actually, you ever used it or not. And so the more we can do to help close that circle, I just think it builds trust and then it makes people want to participate if they know that it actually had an impact.
Right, I agree. I mean, wherever we can do that. I just wanted to be sensitive because I remember there was a short turnaround for this.
It is due to the county before the end of the month.
Thank you so much. This item will return to our next board meeting of October 26, 2021. Our next item, M2, receive information regarding October's Quarterly Williams Uniform Complaint Procedure. Mr. Horstman?
Good evening, President Correa, trustees, Acting Superintendent Davis. Principals and departments are currently compiling information for the Quarterly Williams Report. This information will show if there's any deficiencies regarding sufficient materials for every student, if our teaching staff is highly qualified to teach where they are assigned, and if schools are safe, clean, and functional. Administration is recommending that the board hold a public hearing on October 26, 2021 and approve October's Quarterly Williams Uniform Complaint Procedure. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Horstman. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, thank you so much. This item will return to our next board meeting of October 26 as an action item to both hold a public hearing and approve the quarterly report. Our next item is receive information regarding actual cost for the sale of District General Obligation Bonds for the 2020 Election Series A. Assistant Superintendent McLean?
Thank you, President Correa. So as the board knows, we recently sold the first series of Measure D 2020 election bonds in the amount of $75 million. And so this is just a required reporting item for the district. It's an information item only, no actions required, just for the information of the board.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Thank you for the information. We'll move on to our next item. M4, receive information regarding school-connected organizations. Assistant Superintendent McLean?
Thank you. And I also have with me tonight, Mrs. Baldairis, who I'm going to ask to come up to the podium to answer any questions that the board may have. So the board will recall that this is an annual item that is required by our board policy that each school-connected organization is required to renew on an annual basis to be authorized by the board to operate as an entity. We have 28 different entities tonight. There are three new ones from Justin Garza High School as a new high school. We have a number of PTAs and also other types of clubs. So we are bringing this as an information item tonight, just to answer any questions. And thank you for your time and we'll open it up for questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? I know the board policy is attached, but can you just give us a quick summary of what does it mean to be a school-connected organization? And what are our responsibilities as a district as far as oversight, regulatory oversight? Or what do we do?
Yes, so these are not, these are separate entities from the district. They're not district funds. These are organizations that operate to assist the schools and the district with their goals. We appreciate the work of each one of these groups. So each, as you look at the board agenda item, there are attached documents that are required to be filled out each year by each entity, including financial information, insurance information, an agreement that states that they are responsible for their entity and does not incur any liability on behalf of the district or the board. We do have an oversight process. Ms. Baldairis, if you'd like to come up and talk about the review process and what we're doing?
You need to push the push button?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good evening. So what we do as far as oversight, so we review everything that comes in. Once in a while, we'll have some of these student body, I'm sorry, the school connected come in and ask us questions, so we try to give them advice. Usually annually, we have a meeting to discuss internal controls, methods to keep things safe from fraud, because it is a business. We do let them know it's their responsibility, meetings, follow their guidelines. There's been a couple of times where I've done audits based on either superintendent or my boss's request, but they haven't been done lately.
So we don't have a process in place to periodically audit these organizations?
Not in detail unless asked. So if a principal calls me saying, hey, we think we're having some issues, can you come in? Then I'll find time to come in. But it's only been that way for, I mean, since we've been doing it. I know we've discussed doing periodic, which, I mean, I can go ahead and try to fit that in my schedule. And it could range from two to maybe three a year, just depending on the volume that they have.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Sorry, Mr. McLean, did you want to say?
No, that's fine. We are planning to do on a rotating basis those audits this year as time permits and we will get through quite a number of them. We do have the ability to revoke their operating privileges at any time if we do see a problem.
Okay. I know we've had issues in the past, which is why, and I mean, we now have two new board members, but about a year ago, maybe even a year and a half, I don't know timelines with the pandemic anymore. But there was a discussion about implementing some regular audits, whether it's two to three. And I'm wondering whether we need to review the board policy and incorporate some similar language or draft an administrative procedure to incorporate that? Because we have had organizations that weren't able to pay their responsibilities. We had scholarships that weren't paid, we've had embezzlements before. And I know, I do remember specifically one of our financial audits having negative comments related to the organization. So I just want to make sure that we're proactive. I also want to be respectful of adding more to the workload, considering our staffing concerns. But I do think that it's a conversation that this board needs to have and evaluate. So if I can plant the seed and we can identify the appropriate time to bring back the policy and have a more in-depth conversation about what are some of the procedures that we can put in place to be able to audit these organizations in addition to the yearly review that's done.
What we can do is we can report back to the board at a later date with the audits that have taken place over the course of the year and give you an update on that if you'd like. And we do have the ability through the current board policy to audit. It doesn't specify specifics as to. It doesn't specify specifics as to how many or when, but we would follow that guidance to do these audits periodically and to look at the books and to make sure. It is not covered by our district financial audit, again, because of the fact that these are not district funds, so it would be up to our staff to be able to provide this ability of oversight.
Yeah, if there's no objection from the board, I mean, I'd be happy to just get some feedback and some realistic response as far as if it's feasible to do three or four audits or what that workload looks like, so that we're mindful if we do change a policy or draft a new one, that we're not being unreasonable.
Sure.
Any comments or questions from anyone? Trustee Cervantes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Only because I'm unclear, but obviously there's PTA, there's Parents Club, there's Parent-Faculty Club, there's community clubs. So I just want to understand, are they all their own independent 501(c)(3)'s or is the school providing them a 501(c)(3) and they are operating underneath that? Because if that's the case, then there's state policies that they have to do in 90, N90s, I90s, several elements that they have to be compliant with. If not, they lose their 501(c)(3). So I'm not sure exactly how that's working. And can you kind of tell me the difference between a club, a PTA, and/or a faculty and parent club?
Okay, so everybody or every organization that listed are their own 501(c)(3), except for the, well, I guess they still are, the PTAs. The PTAs run under, there's a regional, Fresno Regional, and then, you know, there's national level. So they have more reporting requirements than probably these other entities. Yes, they have to file taxes and so forth, and we do check, because it takes a couple of years for them to say, okay, you're in kind of like a hold status. And I have Isabel, she'll check that. There's a website in IRS that will check their 10 number to make sure they're still current as far as they've been turning in their taxes and so forth. We do that once a year. That's part of that one, this initial review. All the other ones, the name of them, whether they're a PFC, meaning they're a parent-faculty club, or a booster, or a community club, those are true 501(c)(3)'s. So they are their own nonprofit.
I don't think I mentioned it earlier, but there's also a manual that they are provided with in addition to the training that Ms. Baldairis's department provides to, for them to follow this. So there are some guidelines that we give them, which is typical of most school districts.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, this item will return to our next agenda for approval, correct? Any objection to having them return under consent? If anyone wants to discuss any of them, we can always pull them. Hearing no objection, this item will return under consent to our October 26th board meeting. And our final item for tonight, receive information regarding change order number 17 for Justin Garza High School. Mr. McLean and Mr. Martinez?
Thank you. As you mentioned, this is change order 17 for the high school. Mr. Martinez is here tonight. I'll ask him to come up to the podium just to answer any questions. This is a total amount of $71,951 for this change order, which is a 0.07% increase to the project, bringing us to date at a percentage total of just over 2% of the total project. So we still have a contingency balance after this change order of about $3.1 million. And with that, I will open it up for any questions.
Any questions or comments from the board? Doesn't sound like we have any questions. If there's nothing else you gentlemen would like to add? Okay.
Nothing at this time.
Any objections to having this item return under consent for approval to our October 26th board meeting? Hearing none, this item will return to consent. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Advanced planning, our calendar is attached. Does anyone have any additional information and closing comments from the board? Okay. Our next board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 26, 2021, starting at 6:00 PM for our closed session, 7:00 PM for our public session, or as soon as we conclude our closed session. We do not need to adjourn to closed sessions. So our final item for tonight is adjournment. What are the wishes of the board?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by Trustee Solis. I have a second by Trustee Chan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.